Sort of apropos of my previous comments, I'd like to know if LAPD could provide for the past few years, I'm sure this year is not done yet, a breakdown of calls that they have received, emergency and non-emergency by subject matter. Was it a burglary? Was it a loud party? Was it about homelessness? Just so we can get a sense of what the demands are on LAPD, so we can assess how our money was spent and how we might change it going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Bonin, and I assume you're including in that both 911 calls and non-emergency calls as well?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. So I don't think we need to hear from LAPD. I'm sure that they took note of that request and that report will be forthcoming. Okay. Any other questions, members, for CAO or any comments about the FSR as it's been amended? All right, then let's go ahead and call the role and we will vote on the FSR as amended.
Councilmember Krikorian?
Aye.
Councilmember Price?
Aye.
Councilmember Corret?
Aye.
Councilmember Loomisfield?
Loomisfield, aye.
And Councilmember Bonn?
Bonn, aye.
Members, my apologies, but we're going to have to reconsider that vote because it just occurred to me, we have not yet taken the public comment yet. So we'll come back to cast the vote on the FSR after we've concluded public comment. And that is what we will go to next. So we're going to begin now the public comment part of our agenda. And I'd ask the clerk to please read out the instructions and we'll begin taking comment in a moment.
Thank you, sir. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment on the items listed on the agenda should call 1-669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 161-829-4030 and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Let's go ahead and again, call the first speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Mendoza-Price. I am not positive which item it is, but I just wanted to urge the council members to fully fund spay neuter this year. So again, I'm Caitlin Mendoza-Price. I'm calling from the Spay Neuter Project of Los Angeles to advocate LA leadership, renew our commitment to animal welfare and no kill by increasing funding for spay neuters this year, as it currently is to the amount that was funded last fiscal year. We have a change.org petition that has received over 12,000 signatures on this specific issue. Snipala is Los Angeles' largest spay neuter provider. We've performed over 215,000 spay neuter surgeries. We could not have had this level of success with spay neuter without the City of Los Angeles' spay neuter voucher program. The program is critical to low-income individuals being able to access the legally mandated spay neuter surgery. And it is a relatively small gap to be bridged between what people can afford and what spay neuter actually costs. But it means the world to loving guardians and their pets in the City of Los Angeles. And we, as a city, I'm sure do not want to go back to the days of euthanizing droves of adoptable cats, dogs, and puppies, as well as bunnies and other companion animals. And while this is a moral imperative, it's also a fiscal one. The maximum spay neuter subsidy is $75 for cats and $125 for dogs and rabbits. When you consider that every single animal that comes into the shelter system costs over $200 to care for, it's clear that spay neuter is an investment. And for every dollar that we invest a day, we will save dozens more in years to come. So please do not allow domestic spay neuter and your.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, caller. Next speaker, please, please. I apologize, members of the council. Each speaker will have two minutes. Next caller.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is Anthony. I'm calling about, I don't know the item number, about the police budget.
Go right ahead, sir.
Hi, yeah, I'm an LA city resident. I strongly support defunding police and I cannot believe this budget. I mean, even ignoring the last two weeks for a second, how in the world can you justify giving over 50% of our budget to police when we are still facing this pandemic? We all know that the police are only going to continue their violent assault on people of color. And it's important to remember that LA's black and Hispanic residents have been dealing with the worst effects of the coronavirus. So instead of putting money towards social programs or even infrastructure boosting the economy during a stressful time, no, you're going to allow it all to be thrown at cops, who have been proven time and time again, especially within these last two decades. Violent and unnecessary. And you're going to give them more. Fuck that and fuck Garcetti with his empty gesture of, you know, diverting less than 3% of the cop budget to communities of color. That is fucking crumb. And honestly, none of you are fooling anybody with your bullshit. Please listen to the people and revoke this budget. And the last thing I want to say is to two of the members, Paul and Bob, can you guys like shut up and listen to the people who are actually living in this city? Mike Bonin, I appreciate you, you're okay. But Paul and Bob going on and on about the police militarization and this and that, you have no idea what you're talking about. Sit down with leaders of Black Lives Matter and adopt a budget for the people, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hi, Jennifer Forsythe. I write a general comment about the budget. First, I just wanted to thank the council members on the phone who were involved in recommending up to 150 billion to be divested from the LAPD to jobs, healthcare, and community centers. I appreciate the signal that some of you are listening and watching for better. However, the LA police budget is about billions of dollars, so you can and you must go further. As the current protests across the city have been laid out in front of our eyes on the streets, on our TV screens, and across social media, we've all seen clearly that the budget system is fundamentally broken. The police with their bloated budget and loaded personnel and total lack of accountability have been empowered to make criminal individuals ordinary citizens while their own criminal actions of power and murders go unchained. This is morally wrong and abhorrent. Our black communities have been subjected to hate, sanctioned violence, and racism for decades, and it is now crystal clear that it's not the action of a single bad act, but a widespread symptom of our broken system. We cannot look away, and you, the members of this council, cannot look away. We must start repairing the harm done to our black neighbors over hundreds of years and use our money to address the root issues of economic instability. This means using the LA budget to invest in housing, jobs, education, and healthcare, as well as alternative community safety models that don't kill black people. As Councilmember Bonin mentioned, alternative models already exist across the country and are often cheaper. So rather than having police respond to frequently escalate emergencies involving substance, mental health, or homelessness, social workers and healthcare workers should respond with housing support and other resources that address individual needs rather than criminal animals. Police are violent workers, not social workers. So we need to stop funding and legitimizing their response to situations that they are not trained to deal with. And as the second-largest city in the US, the country, and much of the world is watching you and what you do right now. We understand now.
Thank you, I'm sorry, your time has expired. We need to go to the next, go to the next, I go you.
Okay.
Next speaker. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is Jessica Crasen. I'm speaking on Agenda Item 1, which is general public comments. I am a resident of Council District 1. I am a newly-elected member of the LA Central Committee at AD 51. And I am calling up the Budget Committee and the rest of the City Council to reallocate approximately 1.2 billion dollars to cover the police budget to go into investing in new housing programs. I strongly support the Healthy LA and People's Budget Coalition. We have had just decades of racist policies, land planning, and investment from LA's black communities, and they continue to have just devastating effects today. Black residents are represented in the homeless population, and they continue to experience higher rate of unemployment. Our shameful history of racism has frankly created a city where black and Latinx communities still face the deepest inequities. So I'm asking the City Council to please reject the Mayor's budget and pass a budget that shows Black Lives Matter and her values in Los Angeles. It's a little concerning to hear Councilmember Corret talk about a more circumspect approach and hearing him say that the LAPD maybe does work in certain areas. LAPD is contract to receive 4.8% per day wages in the fiscal year that starts July 1st. And over the same period, because our study is cutting, he's going to be sure 139 million in furloughs from nearly 16,000 civilian city workers? This is not okay. We need to defund the police, and that doesn't mean that we're destroying them. This means that we are redirecting funds from police departments to other parts of society to help, like housing, education, and communities. We really need to reimagine public safety in ways that shrink and eventually abolish police practice while prioritizing education, housing, economic security, mental health, and alternatives to combat this violence. If we live in a violent society, while police rarely see guaranteed safety, so now more than ever is the time to divest from the police. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hi, yeah, this is Richie Sercenko. I'm from People's City Council and I'm in LA. I'm going to take all two minutes. Yeah, so for everyone part of the Budget Committee today, this has been some new things. The People's Budget LA Coalition, led by Black Lives Matter LA, has started, you know, this budget battle for months now. And so don't act like, oh, we are going to do a meeting on the 8th and we're going to figure this out. You guys have known this has been a problem the entire time. And guess what? People's Budget LA trended number one countrywide today. So guess what, guys? There's a lot of eyes on us right now. There's going to be people in the streets for the whole summer demanding that we defund the police because that's what people want. If you look at the survey results of People's Budget LA, there is 5%, where people think that 5% of the budget is to go to the police. So who do you represent? For you on the Budget Committee, who do you represent? If the people of Los Angeles think that 5% of the budget should go to the police and you are going to give $3 billion to the police? And guess what? Paul Corret, I'm going to read this tweet to you from Black Lives Matter LA today that they sent out while you were talking. They said, "Where has Paul Corret been? A Rodney King and George Boyd, the cases of police brutality, you know, other horrific murders that he might want." And they list names of people that have died in LA. And then they also tweeted about you, Bob. Black Lives Matter LA tweeted this about you, Bob. We don't need this long explanation on a non-agenda item, Bob. We've been saying 54% was the general fund and understand the difference. Stop white explaining People's Budget LA. You guys don't understand what is going on. The people are acting directly against what you are trying to do. Stand up and get a backbone and stop being fucking powerless. I yield my time, fuck you.
Next speaker.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Yes, hello, this is Rappia, San Francisco City Council. I'm speaking to Item 1 and general comments. We urge you to people who have a special priority and value, we work alongside communities of essential who bear the disproportionate chunk of multiple crises, the housing and financial crisis, institutional racism, this administration's administrative policies, the climate crisis, and now this pandemic. We need a budget that divests the police's assets and communities. So we urge your support on four items. First, the People's Budget LA is calling for defunding the police and investing in community-based programs. We need care, not cops. These services go directly to the community-based programs, not to the police, which fundamentally has flawed in recent systems. And I'll also say that in addition, it generates violence. It is especially wrong and offensive to use race survivors to convince us to prop up this system and force us to fall to choices. Secondly, support the Healthy LA Coalition proposal for housing justice. Next, please renew the LA Justice Fund to protect our immigrant communities from this administration's facial deportation machine. And finally, we support the Snipala Coalition's call to further funding for the Climate Emergency Mobilization Office. We're asking for an additional $300,000. We need you to fund your solidarity for a People's Budget that ensures the justice and sustainable recovery for all and for all racial justice, housing justice, gender justice, environmental justice, all of it. We will accept nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hello, councilmembers, my name is Janice Povida. I am not sure what the item is. I am calling on behalf of Snipala. I'm calling as a constituent of the City of LA to urge our city leadership to renew its commitment to animal welfare and no kill by fully funding spay neuter at the same level in 2019 and 2020. Because the spay neuter will no doubt be no doubt of animals coming into our shelters, and it will end up costing taxpayers more shelter protection in the long run. Please do not cut spay neuter funding. Cutting it will directly affect the amount of animals we will provide in shelters that are highly adoptable. It will detract us from our no-kill spay neuter, which is critical part of the equation of keeping animals from euthanasia and being adopted. It will save money in the long run for taxpayers. And, you know, it is the law, but it is the must, and that is my whole budget model to be accessible to elderly, especially during COVID-19. There are a lot of people that are loving pet owners that need this funding for the care for their pets and getting spay neuters. I yield my time, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Um, hi. My name is Caitlin Mendoza-Price. I'm calling from Los Angeles. I'm not sure what Agenda Item this is, but I would just like to emphasize that I've defunded the police, cutting the budget by 100 billion at the start, but it's not nearly enough when the LA budget here is 3.1 billion. It's just not even a slice of it. Well, honestly, I just called this today so I could ask everyone on the council a question. What made you pursue this job? Why are you in line for work? And I truly mean that as a genuine question. And I know you're not able to respond, but just, I want you to consider that today. Why are you here? I would imagine that you did this work to support this brutality, this obscene and out-of-control police violence that's happening in our city right now. This is a historical moment. Like, we can all feel it, and I think you need to decide what side of history you want to be on. And it's okay to change your opinion when you learn more information about something which you're perhaps learning over the course of your life. But there's just, there's nothing wrong with having that. It's out of time, and I think you really need to examine why you're here and what you stand for. The City Council should defund the police and adopt the People's Budget. Thank you.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Yes, my name is Alexis, and I would like to speak on multiple items. I apologize for being too fast, but there's a lot to say. Item 3, furloughs, they will affect the efficiency of the city's net. But furloughs must apply to police as well. Would you eliminate over 75% furlough across the city? That is 350 million adults that you save just for LA PD. Item 11, through our outreach, especially in the state of the city, we've got an early five people in exactly the direction that we need to go. Now, most importantly, number one, budgets. We all know budgets are easy to reach, so they spend all the time. It's been more than two weeks since we've had. And then we might have been thinking, but they haven't been able to reach those. And suddenly, thousands of plaintiffs in the class action lawsuit have lost their rights. And I'm not even happy to say that. And I use your word. At the same time, I know, member Bonin, that I understand, I understand. I feel we've dealt before, so we wanted to reduce their burden and use the city to maybe reduce the burden that it brings. Also, I can then, of course, refresh the information. I understand that sometimes people are going to resent these problems. It's possible. More than they do, they're seeing such a, you know, you have to kind of remember, if you're getting by doing what you're doing, it's just saving money by taking security details. I feel like we are not. You said, well, during most of your time, you're already. Directing the face of the audience. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bonin.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is Kepana Baptiste. I want to speak on Agenda Item 1.
Go right ahead, sir.
So it seems like our City Council members are afflicted with this kind of myopic idea of society, where we are an irreparable figure. It seems like this council is either incapable or unwilling to consider the world without. The peaceful protests that are all under the名义 of rights with the fed, right? Black Democrats, scholars, activists, were more than ready to talk about what that world might look like. Minneapolis, meeting that charge, etc. But this council was willing to listen to us and instead is more than willing to accept money and campaign contributions to the LA City Council. Stop dealing with us. Allyship is a verb. If you aren't allies, how start the policy? That's your job. But again, council is beginning to want to absolve itself of any kind of response to this by doing some attitude, uh, that's saying our situation is not affected and healthcare, housing, and economic development. You are in charge of that. It is to make clear that the council. Where is that money that's going to help in healthcare and economic development? It's not going to any of this. It's not going to Black Democrats, and it's going to cops. It's going to corrupt land development, where we bribe council members like these are, like me, and like O'Farrell. We need funds, we need funds, we need. It means that that billion, next to the LA City, will be zero, nothing, nada. This will not permit any other, and everyone on this call should look forward and ask, look outside. The wind will change the flow, and you can either flip out or you won't over. Fire, fire, have mayor's sign and cancel them. I yield my.
Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is Allison Bigelow, and I just wanted to make a general public comment. I live in Hollywood, and I am famously stupid, and even I don't understand that the current budget does not reflect a People's Budget. And we don't want it, but we need a People's Budget. It's simple. The current budget is collecting our community and rewarding racist cops, aka the LAPD, aka the people who's funnel many of you continuously. And I don't care how you rationalize this, 3.1 billion, aka 53.8% of the budget is still due by takeaways to the community and gives the people who are actually targeting black people. Please stop being stupid little hammers and leave on the police and help your community. We need immediate action. I believe in my community. I believe in the people of LA, and I do not leave on the police. I hope today you can finally understand this, because guess what? I just got off the phone with Satan, and every day you keep not understanding that we must defund the police. He makes it a little bit worse down there for you, and the call is typing hot. Please stop being stupid. Please defund the police and use that 3.1 million for the community. I love the people of LA. I believe in them, and I do not, and I do the police. And also, it's disappointing that there's not one woman on this committee that I've heard from. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is Nicole Plesha. I live in District 3, which is relevant to Bob. Sorry, I have my kid in the room. So last week, a disabled unhoused man was shot in the face with a rubber bullet. An innocent man, whose system had failed, was caught in the crosshairs of a movement who meant his men had failed. It's time to redo the system and time to adopt the People's Budget. You say you're heartened to hear more and more and more people engaging in this budget meeting, but the reason they are engaging is because so many people are unemployed right now. And it's almost as if keeping people busy keeps them out of civic engagement and hiding their voices heard. So in this time of this crisis, how exactly are we expanding the LA budget? It's an overinflated department that should be reallocated to social. It's a Band-Aid solution that is not addressing the roots of the issue. And it's resorting to drawing, arming the city's citizens by overusing cops. And bonuses? Do you think after these terrific acts that we've witnessed over the last two weeks and even before then, when the COVID groundups were happening in unhoused communities, do you think anybody's going to sign off on bonuses for these people? You think they deserve bonuses? And Corret, you're suggesting that people are asking to have money be handed out willingly. We are not asking you to take money out of the reserve. We are asking you to reallocate the LAPD and have it go to more efficient, humane programs and programs. And I just want to say, I am also for keeping the neutering program because that's going to save money in the long run. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on. Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hi. Item 1, about the. Caller, we're in stock support of the Health and Justice Committee. I urge you to make a progress on your budget to not neglect the values of our citizens. In this time of global pandemic and the fight on the pandemic, the city's budget is investing in communities, not policing. We need care, not harshness. That's funding permanent housing facilities, helping dogs, eviction spending, supportive housing, gender protection. I also urge the Council to have 300,000, 300,000, 400,000, 500,000 in relation to office budget. Black, indigenous, male, Asian, and colored, historic, and African, because it is unfortunately impacted by the coronavirus. I also urge the Council to deliver a welcome to the city's community. Overall, for our job to be an oversight, to be a judge of recovery, without community, proper housing, integrated government, emergency board, and emergency planning, I'm asking for the City Council to reject the Mayor's budget and pass the budget for Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Ben, and I'm calling from the Adams Normandy Region, Los Angeles. I want to tell you all a little story. I had a job in Venice. I took a bus every day down Venice Boulevard to Venice. And then went down Venice Boulevard. I passed under the highway, and there was an unhoused encampment there. About once a month, if I took that early morning bus to work, I saw the LAPD destroying that. That is a failure of policy, of policy. That is, that is, those are people's homes, but the LAPD, because one person said, everything is, the only tool is a hammer, everything looks like a nail, violently remove them, and that is wrong. And that is a policy failure that comes from the White House, yes, and all the way down to you in the City Council. The police are a cancer on the city, and like a cancer, it needs to be cut out. It's not enough to take away millions.
I hope you understand that civilians are groups of organized thugs. When police unionize, more civilians die. And we need to take that on head first. I hope that you all will take a look at what's happening across America right now and understand that we need real change. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next speaker please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Yan. Item number one, in general public comment. I'm a lifelong resident of Los Angeles urging the council further to cover the L.A. P.D. budget in order to distribute public public health services in a way. I also want to challenge donations from the police to protect the public sector. I saw a video this week of L.A.P.D. officers personnel surrounding Councilmember Rodriguez. They're running her reaction and withholding services since their budget was cut. You're not afraid of this, you're afraid of tactics. In a 1990/1000 city council hearing prior to the Rodney King trial, then-police chief Earl Gates also threatened to withhold police and emergency services since the council bid in. With officers charged with beating Mr. King, we need to learn, we need to enter. We should consider not the police, we fund L.A.P.D. and invest our community and cover me and cover you all the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on. Caller, call or state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hi, hello, do you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Hi, thank you. My name is Christina. I live in District Eight, majority black and brown neighborhood in South LA that has spared the run of violent and systemic neglect. Mayor Garcetti has urged me to give the over fifty percent of the city budget. This is wrong. This is a sickness that council must alleviate. We need free public transit and non-car infrastructure, not police. Mental health care, not police. Workforce development, not police, not. Small business support, not police. Housing for the unsheltered, and not police, police. Support for paycheck, insecure teacher, not police. Arts and culture, not police, police. Uh, the last woman was absolutely correct. That's right. Police unions are the real thugs, and we need to rethink community safety because the police aren't art. If teachers have to pay for their own crayons, then the police should have to pay for their own riot gear. Remove funding from the police and not other city budgets. And please adopt the people's budget now. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on. Hi, uh, my name is Michael Peterson. I am a resident of District Sixteen and a member of the L.A. Public Committee. I would like to leave general comment and also speak on agenda item two. Um, in regards to agenda item two, I wasn't completely listening, but I wanted to ask a rhetorical question of how much of our federal funds funds that was held over the last eight years went to calling in the National Guard? Well, protesters who protest against police brutality. Additionally, um, I for general comment and calling on this committee to adopt the people's budget. Even though, um, a lot of, um, meetings, the beginning of it, has been spent on talks about how the city doesn't have power with their power. Um, how the federal government and the county government can step up. And how the previous city council has failed to step up. That's not the point. Um, you have the word, have the top review, the people's city budget, um, priorities are laid out. Forty-four point five percent of that budget is universal aid and crisis management. Uh, bringing to the rent prices that is happening in LA right now. City council has not done anything to do, uh, to rent cancellations. They haven't, they haven't done, uh, residents of Los Angeles in hotels yet. We call in the National Guard to protect citizens from themselves. It doesn't make any sense. You need to defund the police. You need to support the people's budget. And, um, listen to your constituents. People are calling and tweeting. They want to be heard and need to listen to us. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Carrie O'Neil. Um, I'd like to give public comment, uh, can you hear me?
Sure. Go right ahead.
I'd like to give public comment, general public comment, uh, comment on item one. The cuts that you guys are gonna make are unacceptable. The police have three point one billion dollars in their budget. We have seen these men and women brutalizing the public for peaceful protests for over a week now. What is it going to take? What is it gonna take? Chief Moore, he retired or resigned. He retired for a few weeks in the beginning of 2018 and collected one point three million dollars as a part of the five year, um, they get five years of their salary given to them in one long sum when they retire. Then Garcetti, each day him as chief? This has to stop. This has to stop. You guys joined the city council, I believe, because you really want to help the people of LA. If you do want to help the people of LA, you'll see cities injustices and you will make the changes, adopt a people's budget. This cannot go on and on and on. You've seen fifty thousand people outside marching, defunding the police. And you guys are gonna throw a breadcrumb of a hundred and fifty million dollars out of three point one billion? Yeah, they're big numbers. We're not stupid. This is a bait and switch and you have to stop this. And furthermore, Garcetti claiming that these acts of brutality that we've been signal boosting on the internet are part of a larger context, so they have a greater context to them. It's absolutely perpetuating the racist belief that George Floyd and Eppelmann, Eppelmann and Eppelmann, who was murdered by the police, did something to deserve it. There is not a greater context. The police are part of a militia and we need to defund them. I yield my time. Thank you. My time.
Thank you very much. Uh, next speaker please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Heather Santora, agenda item one. Hi, I'm just trying to ask you to reject the mayor's budget. Uh, things are changing very rapidly. That's what I've seen over the last few weeks. Uh, perhaps this is a great starting, when it was first proposed, a lot of people still very passionately will disagree. That, you know, there's kind of a smoke signal, but let's take the optimism route that this was, um, you know, uh, uh, way for us to be a leader in the country. I'm horrified with Minneapolis, who is leading the country on this. We are Los Angeles, we are California. We have the ability to really come out and show. Because we have so many grassroots, we have so many organizations that have put in the work over the last, not just, not, not just the last month. They've been putting in for years, and they're showing us the way out of this. They're showing us the way north. So I'm asking every single member on the council, no matter where you are today, just take a giant step forward. Just take a giant step forward. Defund the police. You're asking to lower the percentage to five percent to go to the police. This is our time to lead. We should shift resources away from the LAPD budget and reinvest them into Black grassroots. And the roadmap, the roadmap is, it takes you so much to the people's budget. Thank you so much. All the grassroots organizations that are putting in the work for years. Just take a diet breath. All together and just realize that we are all moving forward. And please, please, please put yourself on the forefront of the movement because it is happening with or without your agreement. Thank you so much. I yield my time. Adopt the people's budget.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead, go right ahead, go right ahead.
My name is Carol and I want to make a general comment on item one. This is mainly director of council members who are Korean, women's health and sports based on their statements today. Um, it's pretty clear that you try to explain away the claim of the fact that you are careful of giving the support to the LA police protection team. It's not lost on me, council members, women's health and sports, that's the truth of value that you're donating over human lives. In just one week, in February 2013, LAPPL PAC donated over ninety thousand dollars to sports and over sixty thousand dollars to women's health. So I'm not surprised that you're donating. Try to minimize the fact that your allocation of the federal funds to the police by saying that when you take the entire, when you take the police funding is only ten percent. By that same logic, then, the current tiny allocation of the allocation of funds to housing and even investment becomes close to zero when taking the entire budget into account. Right? Or does that not follow the principle of justice? You try to make it like you to the city jurisdiction, your hands are tied, the business is, yes. We understand how the government works. We understand the budget. We don't need any more prerogatives. The meaning of things addressing us like we didn't educate ourselves. Your job, your job, your job. So let me do the same as you. We presented through the people's budget exactly what we need in our budget. We spelled it out so easily that even, even, even blinded by the donations from the LAPL. We spelled it out so easily that even you present the need, defund the police. We are coming out by the thousands with that singular act. By remaining compliant and loyal to the LAPL, we see exactly where your morals lie. In greed and power, not in service to the people. So I yield my time. I go, I go, I go. The women's health and sports, fuck you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next speaker please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
I'm sorry, before you begin, could you please turn your device down? And caller, please remember to turn your device down before you begin speaking because there's a delay that will interrupt our interview. So, uh, caller, go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, 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 yes.
Hi, my name is Ivan Castro. I'm a business owner in CD10, third time caller, longtime listener, but, um, all jokes aside, I'm calling today to make the following clear. Defunding the police is compromised. It is step zero. The goal is abolition. In this context, abolish the police, abolish prison. The absolute bare minimum that you can do in the execution of your job is to recommend defunding the LAPD and redirect the funds from proven killers, public services, housing. Specifically, acquisition and rehabilitation of single family units and single family homes for affordable housing. A comprehensive eviction defense program that includes rights counsel. Services for thousands of units of for thousands of houses. Also fully funding the APD to ensure enforcement of existing tenant protection. Thanks to Act L.A. for this point. You've all seen that Minneapolis's cities and counties intend to disband the MPD in favor of a proven community public safety model. If you fail to reject the bail and defunding the LAPD, you're showing all of us, all of what we already know, that the LAPPL, who already finds your pockets, owns you. One hundred and fifty million out of million dollars cannot be defunded. It's a slap in the face to all the organizers who have been on the front lines for decades calling for defunding and abolition. Now is the time to separate yourselves, separate your tendencies. Do not align yourselves with Garcetti's budget. They're sure to hold you accountable. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Hi, council members. Hi, everyone who's on the call. My name is Oscar Velde Dominguez. Uh, I live in District One. I am a Euro Indigenous American, African Salvadorian. Um, I am a member of the Invest Youth Coalition and the Healthy LA Coalition, a supporter of the People's Budget Coalition. Just wanted to, uh, share some ideas with y'all, see what y'all think. Um, first, first off, I believe that the budget, uh, needs to be reimagined and rebuilt. Um, here's a couple ideas that y'all can start with. Um, making permanent affordable housing from existing housing stock. Um, supporting, fully funding, uh, eviction defense, eviction program, social housing programs. Um, also fully funding building, um, affordable housing and supportive housing and also tenant protection. I think it's important that we also include into our mindset. Uh, these are dark historical facts to all of us. Um, but I would really like for everyone to live in the mind in the shoes of the youth of our city. Um, and really meet the needs of the youth, especially on communities. Um, I believe that we should also be focusing the budget on meeting our basic needs. Um, these basic needs include housing, food, security, job security, clothing, transportation, health services, health services. Just any basic need that a human being deserves. That's what we should be fully funding. Um, and I really appreciate everyone who's been in the car and thank you for who, for all those who have been part of the movement. Before I was born, I'm born, I'm born. Uh, the youth are watching, the youth are listening, the youth are moving, the youth are planning. And we hope that this councilman, the councilwoman here in the city can build a relationship with the youth and everyone in the city, especially black and brown youth, uh, African Indigenous youth. Um, because we need to come together and we imagine our strength.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, next speaker.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Joseph O'Conne, general public comment.
Yes, go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Uh, I just want to echo what, 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 what you said at the very end. Uh, I think you're talking before and you're warmly thanking each commenter after, uh, the comment. Which I don't buy, but I do want to talk, but I think everyone can take some time to listen, reading and calling, reading. I always learn a lot, to everybody. And I just want to uplift that, uh, regardless of what the city council does. We already are stronger for creating this movement. I also want to uplift the work that BLM LA has done to make this conversation even possible. Um, and also to spotlight without LAPD spying in Los Angeles, Community Action Network. Uh, I'm a member of their hardworking visionary organizations that have been doing this work for a lot, a lot longer than this. Um, you know what we want? We want it. Deli, 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 deli. I mean, it's not a fucking secret in the fact that you, offering us opportunities to weigh in as if you don't know exactly what we want. We want it to be genuine. This is genuine. It's the austerity pop. We recognize this meeting. Presumably to make us feel like, uh, we're like, we're not awesome. We know it is. We know that you have the authority to reallocate these funds. We're not buying your, oh, we can't do anything bullshit. So whatever money is in that pot, if you want all of it, we deserve all of it, all of it, all of it, we're gonna get all of it. So, you know, you can either, you know, you can deal with it, you can get the fuck out of the way because it's not, it's not even. Also, if BLM LA treated council member for having committed instances of police murder you can think of, or Rodney King and George Floyd, you would not care about much of the city. Uh, uh, and you know, go fuck yourself. It's everything, baby. Oh, yeah. Fucking true. I yield my time.
Next. Next speaker please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is, my name is Lambert. I'm speaking on item one. Um, before I do it, before I do it, babe, it smells extremely fishy to me, uh, that I don't want to cause this to be here. Uh, but I don't want to waste my time on that. I want to wait, no, it's not bullshit. Um, my big question for today is, uh, what is the city's goal? If it is to uphold the suppression of self-evidence, the violation of the rights and incarceration of your currently two thousand citizens, then don't make a statement to the proposed budget because your police force is delivering. But if it is to keep citizens' attention meaningfully overseas spending of the city's money to ensure access to the essentials like state buildings, housing, healthcare and jobs, why doesn't police spending continue to increase with over half of the cities' unemployment funds going to the LAPD? Why aren't qualified healthcare professionals and social workers being paid into jobs and paid into paying earnings? When we know police training is short and inefficient is short and budget finance committees? What is your goal? I realize that the mayor has committed to cut around a hundred million of the police budget, but as members of the committee, I know you realize what a tryst action that actually is. Until spend, for other citizens, comes anywhere near what is spent on our corrupt public department, your goal as a committee does not align with the people's interest. And we will remember that when the time comes to make a decision on your reelection. By bonus, I'm in your district and I'm loud. I'm loud.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Gavin Abercrombie, commenting as a resident of LA, uh, general comment for item number one. When police brutality against our black community was protested, LAPD response was even more police brutality. The brutal and hyperviolent response of peaceful protesters will no doubt cost no doubt the money that did need to be spent. A hundred and fifty million cut to LAPD should just be a start. We overrely on the LAPD for all manners of minor issues. Uh, that can better survive people without guns and impunity to kill. And it doesn't need to be this way. We need social services now more than ever. And we want more investment in our black communities. I saw the video of LAPD officers attempting to intimidate the councilwoman from CD7. Uh, don't let the LAPD intimidate you in an attempt to extort more money to their coffers. Enact the people's budget and keep the past proposed by Black Lives Matter and reject the mayor's.
Thank you very much. Next speaker please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Hi, Alice. Um, I'm calling to speak, Alice Wetterland. I'm calling to speak on item number one. Um, I'm thankful for everybody that's spoken so far. Um, I just wanted to say that the city of council, city council, Los Angeles, to adopt the people's budget. I am so proud of this city. We are such diverse cities, to the best, the brightest people in the world. We're home to the Dodgers. You know, this is the greatest place on earth and our response to the pandemic and the state of California is leading the nation. Our environmental record is exemplary. So when I hear that Minneapolis is licking off on city budget structure related to law enforcement and its community, it's an embarrassment. We cannot be behind the Midwest on this, guys. Okay? History is watching. We need to lead the nation on compassionate policy and like care and not cops. This is the moment when we can show the world what Los Angeles is capable of. I urge you to defund the police and adopt the people's budget now. I was arrested for protesting. I was exercising my First Amendment rights when the jury was filled on last week and I could not believe the amount of response from LAPD. There were hundreds of police officers to arrest only a hundred and fifty protesters. We were sent all over the city in cop cars, in wagons, in buses. All of that money was spent to give us what we have. And this would eventually be citations. Citations that could have been given with one stroke of a pen at the moment of arrest. No reason to spend all of this money. It was a ridiculous and I think a deliberate expenditure to show, to show the city of Los Angeles the police can do anything that they want and they're gonna continue to do anything that they want until city council will step up and please adopt the people's budget. Thank you so much for listening. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker please. Next speaker please.
Caller, please state your name and the item that you wish to speak on. Caller, please state your name, your name, your name, and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Go right ahead, caller. Go right ahead. One more time.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Okay, please go to the next caller, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Go ahead, speaker.
Hello, hello, my name is Laura Hulman. I'm calling in the light of the black lives and solidarity with BLM, which is representative of the people's budget. I'm echoing all of the calls that black and brown community members have made for decades, generational history, that we are in the middle of. Still in caring, still in fight, still in fighting. And this, uh, one hundred and fifty million that was being reduced, it's something that is far too little. We know in any context that any black and brown community members have to enforce it. But this is potentially lethal and if not lethal, traumatizing. And we know that it is only a hundred and fifty million out of the, uh, the budget that was already, fifty percent of the general budget. And a bit more is small adjustment, um, urgent, more, more, more money out of the budget. As folks on this call say, we say, our ultimate goal is absolutely, funding the police is, is strategy on the way to opposition. Uh, we have, uh, the leadership of BLM, which is amplifying and funding everything that is being done and anything less, 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 free inscription of the government. So Black Lives Matter, budget LA, we want to be the fans that are, we want to be the fans that are, we want to be the fans.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Oh, hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to speak, uh, general public, uh, general public. There's a serious election responsibility in our leadership, whether Trump, uh, ADG, 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 ADG. Mr. Cady, Senator Peters, who's been motivated by political demand, or last week we have the police more, obviously, more, to the point that all of the protesters are being batted with. It's pretty sad, 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 sad. Y'all have had a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot. Full, because you have a full heart. I guess the one thing that I want to, that I want to, that I want to, that I want to, public outreach, like, feel like some kind of punitive or calm to bad behavior. And it's not to be told, to be told to be bad. If the solution isn't to apologize, hide, 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 or worse, to think that some public grilling is what grilling of work. Rather, the slicing for only arise, you all, you thought of specific priorities, because it's more of a place that you decide to change specific priorities. We can't have these big notions of security from proper, 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 over the lives of Angelinos, particularly in the city. That has a history of racial violence, unmatched in the country. We'll not stop demanding change, and you all take responsibility for your elected position. We must keep on the police and do everything in our power to give America higher power. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, next speaker. Next speaker.
Caller, please, caller name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hello, council members. I am speaking in regards to item number one. My name is Zoe Natale. I am the executive director of SNF LA, the Bay Bell Project of Los Angeles, and I'm calling as a constituent of the city of LA to urge our leadership to renew your commitment to animal welfare and no pill by fully funding spay and neuter. At the same level it was funded in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year. Please do not cut spay and neuter funding. Over the past thirteen years, in partnership with LA Animal Services, SNF LA has saved and neutered over two hundred thousand dogs and cats in Los Angeles. When SNF LA opened our doors over a decade ago, nearly half of the pets entering our city shelters were neutered. Last year, LA nearly achieved a ninety percent save rate in our shelters, thanks in part to high volume spay and neuter programs such as SNF LA and the city vouchers, which provide free and low cost spay and neuter for the public. Over twelve thousand individuals have signed our petition in support of maintaining the same level of funding for spay and neuter in LA. We cannot go back to the days in which we killed tens of thousands of adoptable dogs and cats. There is a law, so it must be, it must be inaccessible. Thank you for considering the importance of, of, in LA, for legged friends, families that love them. SNF LA is proud to put a, put a, to the black and brown community, support all of the calls, Katie, for diverse, otherwise, KPD. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
My name is Steve Ducey. I want to speak on agenda item one and general public comment. Okay. Hi, my name is Steve Ducey. I'm an organizer with Ground Game Los Angeles. Uh, first off, I just wanted to point out that there's really no reason for you guys to not be having this as a video meeting. They just figured this stuff out like right away when COVID happened. Uh, this isn't, this isn't only meeting, which means you're actually in violation of the Brown Act because the documents that you guys are reviewing and the audio, audio, audio of the meeting were not available to the public. Uh, I want to highlight a couple of you. Uh, in 2010, LAPD paid sworn overtime with fifteen million dollars. Uh, in just five years, that number increased to ninety-three million dollars and ballooned to a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars. Uh, that's a one thousand, one hundred and twelve freeze over ten years in paid sworn overtime. Uh, according to a statement from the LA Police Protective League, which thank you, thank you, Kevin for highlighting this. Uh, Police Protective League said, "The nature of police work has evolved. We are also now therapists, drug treatment counselors, counselors, EMTs, many other things." I don't know any therapists, drug treatment counselors, social workers, or EMDM, 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 duns. Um, and I think part of the reason why we're seeing such an explosion in the LAPD budget is just because, because we are cops.
Public safety system for Los Angeles. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thanks. Next, 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 next.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Uh, hi, my name is Jay Aljoum, and I'd like to talk about, uh, item number one. Um, first of all, I want to, like so many callers, uh, 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 I support for, uh, defunding the police, the people's budget LA, and I would like to encourage, uh, my councilman, Mike Bonin, uh, I'm a Mar Vista resident, um, as well as the rest of you to do that. Um, I'd also like to ask a question, which I know you can't respond to, but we heard a lot in opening statements about, um, not being, not being, find the money, or moving the money, but not knowing where it, where it's going. And I believe it was, uh, Councilman, uh, Bluman Field who said, um, that we've tried to throw, almost, and it hasn't worked. So my question is, do you think it's working right now? Do you think that the current budget that we have, especially the amount of money going to, whether that's fifty-four percent, or ten percent, or any number in between, with the three and a half billion dollars, do you think that's worked? And do you think it's working well enough that with minor tweaks will come out ahead? It certainly seems like the, like the, that you're talking about, by seeing in the streets, don't believe that it was working. So we have to try something else. So maybe that something else is throwing a bunch of money that we have been throwing at the police into other areas, into social services, into housing. There have been plenty of people on this call who know way more, 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 more me, who have made what sound like very reasonable suggestions. So for you to sit there and say, "Well, we can't move the money out of the police, we want, we wish we were in position to make incremental changes," is pretty absurd. And Councilman Corret, the fact that you started your state, your state, talking about the horror of seeing the George Floyd video and ended it by talking about, about, about word down.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry your time's expired, thank you. Uh, next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
My name is Elise, I'm a constituent in District Five. Your budget revisions and recommendations need to defund LAPD, DDD, community-led services as detailed in the People's Budget LA. Paul Corret's introductory commentary constating that the creators of the People's Budget LA don't know what they're talking about is disrespectful and misleading, and shifts priorities of politicians who accept campaign donations from the police. I live in Corret's district, and the level of inequality shown by, shown by, and the cruel overpolicing of unhoused folks, really unhoused black folks, right next to the mansions of Bel Air, it is one of the countless examples that District Five needs, and this entire city's need for systemic change that addresses the real needs and inequalities of our communities. Priorities of the political and, 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 the People's Budget provides for this need, is created by, and, 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 and you have been elected to represent, and, and these protests and these comments show, is supported by a vast majority of constituents that you have been elected to represent. L.A., L.A. exhibited speechless harassment and murder of black communities with little to no consequence. It doesn't need reform, it doesn't need your excuses, it needs defunding. I yield my time.
Thanks very much. Uh, next speaker, please.
Your name and the item you, you, you wish to speak on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go right ahead.
Okay, hi, my name is Kelly Kay, I'm an assistant professor at UCLA, and my current research is focused on fiscal policy. Um, I'm calling to comment on item one, as well as make general comments. Is that okay?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's your floor, go right, go right.
Okay. Uh, so I'm calling in today to say that Mayor Garcetti's allocation, portion of the city budget to the LAPD is fiscally and socially irresponsible, and to urge the council to reject the mayor's budget and adopt the priorities outlined in the document. I, I recognize, recognize us as all cities, if this Angeles operates on a fixed budget, and much of its unrestricted funds come from taxes paid by Angelinos. In a, in an unprecedented global pandemic, which has occurred on the heels of an affordability crisis that has made this city increasingly unlivable, of its longtime residents. Given all that we are facing difficult to move forward as a community without substantial funds being dedicated to the members of our community who are most in need, black and brown Angelinos who face discrimination and police violence, our unhoused neighbors, associates, threat of eviction, or untenable rent increases, we're who face healthcare and mental health crises, and our children who cannot live. It is unconscionable to approve a budget that can directly exacerbate these crises instead of alleviating them. Again, I fully have, have a tight budget for that husband and, 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 you are our representative, and these are our tax laws. We need to direct, 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 direct refunds towards care, not cost. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Um, members of the committee, we, um, had originally set aside, uh, an hour and a half, but I, and that's, we have about a half an hour more of that to go, I would recommend that we add, uh, another half an hour to that, uh, so that we can take as many callers as we can. So we will go for another hour of public comment, if that, uh, if there's no objection. So with that, uh, go right ahead. Next speaker, please.
Call, call, state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is Jessie Marie, and I am calling in regards to item one. Dear councilmembers, this past week, we have seen the current, current, current budget of three point one point one in action. Bullets being shot at the faces of people, resulting in skin ripped off, eyesight lost. These rubber bullets are being shot at people protesting police brutality. We have seen tear gas thrown at people protesting police brutality. Tear gas, a chemical weapon banned in warfare, under the Geneva Protocol of nineteen twenty-five. A chemical that targets the line during a pandemic with a virus that targets. It is evident that a heavy amount of this current one billion budget for the LAPD is spent on weapons invested in exercising violence and murder on innocent and unarmed Angelinos. We are a global pandemic. Five percent of Angelinos are unemployed, and you are diminishing the budget for housing, when LA has the house, housing on top of it all. It makes no sense, which is why we demand to defund the police, and put our tax paying, money, money into our citizens. Ask you to not just take a, take a local budget, which is like ten thousand Angelinos, but adopt the people's budget, which allocates the largest amount of money to universal aid and crisis management, build environments, and reimagine community safety. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Caller, please state your item you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go right, go right, go right.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm here to demand the LAPD to fund it immediately and in, and in, in the people's budget. It's that simple. Listen, at the outset of COVID, our healthcare workers waited months for supplies, resources, and testing kits to become available. But it took the LAPD just one day to spring into full military mode, marking this cataclysmic fortnight of uniformed officers beating, shooting at peaceful citizens, simply because those citizens showed up to exercise their First Amendment rights. After decades of misguided reform efforts, it is time to admit, the LAPD in the failed experiment in policing. I support the People's Budget, which calls for an immediate reduction of the size and scope of the LAPD, simultaneous with reinvestment in housing, education, and other community initiatives. Specifically agree with Councilman Labana's comments about new, solutions-driven, nonviolent approaches responding to public needs. On the other hand, Councilmember Blumanfield, your assessment that a decline in community policing will lead to an increase in a militarized state, sir, it's simply wrong, and it is based on unexamined and incorrect assertion that the Los Angeles community is unable to police and regulate itself, and the people of Los Angeles can fight and dispel this in your heart for yourself right now. And to Councilman Record, don't tell us that the budget is short in one breath, and then try to drum up, since burned cop cars in the next. Just decommission them and the officers that drove them, and put the money toward community programs and neighborhood councils. This is not hard, hard. Please, councilmembers, to the people with curiosity, and with a willingness to question your own unexamined assumptions about the ability of the people to, to police themselves. Thanks, I yield my time.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name and the, and the, which you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is Zoe, I'd like to make a public comment. The people of LA have shown, oh, thank you, uh, the people of LA have shown overwhelming support for significantly defunding LAPD to, and, 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 instead through the people's budget on the way to full abolition. We need healthcare, and crisis management, housing, free transportation, and, and, on our terms. I don't understand how you can remain so viciously unyielding, when it is strikingly obvious that police are central perpetrators of violence in this city. Your people are hurting under your leadership, and you don't give a fuck, you work for us, remember? I yield my time. Fuck!
Thank you. Next speaker, please, go right.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
What's up, fam, it's John Modewer, Ground Game LA, public comment.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Um, so, my first comment is, uh, back to Paul, who was concerned about budget. Of course he would, because I would really can't, out of terrorize on how black trans women, like you did at Points At A Park, would expel them from there. Look it up, though. That's racist trans, though. Bob Bluman, though, uh, LAPD is already one of the most terrorized police departments in the country. Uh, you've done nothing to stop the ten thirty-three program. Uh, we still gotta share with the EOD, what the hell you're talking about. Um, and, 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 yeah, we're just gonna read this list, handy little list that I found, of eight simple things that police, non-racist city council and mayor can do to solve the issue of racist policing without impacting the budget. They are, number one, defund the police. Two, defund the police. Three, defund the police. Four, defund the police. Five, defund the police. Six, defund the police. Seven, defund the police. And eight, defund the police. Eight, I have four of my own points I would like to add. There are nine, defund the police. Ten, cancel the only thing. Eleven, defund the police. Twelve, defund the police. Thirteen, gotta defund the police. Fourteen, defund the police. Fifteen, defund the police. Sixteen, defund the police.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the, and the, item you wish to speak on.
Hello, my name is Sean Collins, uh, I'm here to speak on the, uh, table, uh, motion number one.
Go right ahead.
Uh, yes, I'm calling in, in, constituent in, uh, David Ruse's district, I'm also on the steering committee of, uh, Democratic Socialists of America, Los Angeles. Uh, we have endorsed, uh, the, uh, Healthy LA, LA Budget Coalition, I urge you and the rest of the city council to reject the mayor's proposed budget. And, uh, I also ask you to reflect a little bit on qualitative, excuse me, yes, qualitative, rather than the quantitative aspect of city budgeting. There's been a lot of talk today, how much money are we gonna, 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 gonna comment, how much money are we gonna put towards other services, and, uh, community policing, et cetera, et cetera. Um, look to Minneapolis, look at what they're trying to, in terms of rejection of contemporary police policies, and the structure of the police department in general. Uh, when NWA wrote the police, they were really saying, "Fuck the LAPD." Uh, the LAPD is a scar on our, on our, is, is one of the most historically corrupt and despicable in, 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 in the United States. What a lot of your constituents forget, even though they know it in their hearts, hearts, that we didn't elect these people. We elected you. Need you to hold the, hold the, accountable, first of by defunding them, and eventually abolishing the LAPD, as me, a guy from Philadelphia, as the members of DSA LA who had rubber bullets shot at them during protests, as we all know. This is one of the most, uh, corrupt and despicable organizations in the United States. Uh, it's a blight on our city, and we need to start thinking not in terms of dollars and cents, but in terms of human lives, uh, human, humanitarian, and, 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 holes. And while we're, 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 uh, why don't we, uh, uh, not have the, have the, have the, in twenty twenty-eight, uh, and bring, uh, more police, and troops, and, uh, government agents in six, two, city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, 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 next.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on. Caller, state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Go right ahead, speaker.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Okay, we'll need to move to the next speaker, please.
Caller, state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Hello, can you hear me? Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, Patrick, thank you. My name is Patrick, and I'm speaking on item one. I'm a resident of LA in the District Ten, Wilshire, Koreatown, neighborhood, neighborhood. As an emerging healthcare provider, I've been sitting with the rawness of my difficult leadership of the elected city officials. As we continue to face the, 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 the novel virus that attacks the respiratory system, we're collectively witnessing the use of tear gas in the streets. A level of inhumane ignorance among elected officials must stop. Aside a few research studies, tear gas exposure increases the risk of influenza, pneumonia, bronchitis, and other, and other worry illnesses, COVID-19. Repeated exposure of tear gas increases risk of bronchitis and prolonged cough lasting, lasting up to several weeks. Tear gas is an irritant to cells that activate pain receptors, leading to intense burning of eyes, throat, lung, skin, and mucous membranes. Its effects, other, tear gas include a difficulty in swallowing, drooling, or severe burning in the mouth. In some cases, it can cause an asthma, as we have witnessed, or swelling in the area that could potentially lead to asphyxiation or death. Additionally, tear gas has been found to cause maladies. Ending the use of tear gas, tear gater, archaic procedures, features, violence as exhibited by the LAPD is just the start of defunding the police budget. It is now your responsibility and that of America for these brutal and senseless of the LAPD, and to defund the police, and re, re, allocate funds to essential public health services, including medical and mental health, as well as homelessness services. You can do better than a mere one hundred, hundred million dollars, if you know it. To see this city prepared to militarize itself against peaceful protests than it is to face a pandemic should be a clear, as far as priorities are. I hope you're paying attention. Defund the police, fi, social health services. I stand in solidarity with Black Lives Matter, the People's Budget LA, and Healthy LA Coalition. Thank you, adopt the people's budget.
Very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is Jenny Watson-Westall, and I'm giving, giving, giving in. I'm a clinical social worker, I live in the thirteenth district, and I join the calling on you to support, to protect. Financing a militarized police force while humane and evidence-based programs are continually is second, beginning from a perspective, but, 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 but it's third and insane from a national policy perspective. You don't have to start from scratch, some, some seem to think we, haha, are. As a social worker, I know that there are many, many solutions already operating to meet community, and they are very well suited to respond to human suffering in our city. Take LAPD, defund that. Our sick obsession with policing has caused horrific harm and trauma, and has poisoned our integrity as a community. And starting to think, 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 be scared of crap, too. Is that the case? You've got to find the vision and courage to create an ethical and nonviolent, well-funded social service sector here. Please make LA a leader in this. I yield my time.
Thanks very much.
Caller, and the item you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is Kendall Mayhew, and I'd like to give general public comment and speak on agenda item number one.
Okay, go right ahead.
I'm an organizer with Ground Game LA, and, 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 I want to express solidarity to everyone rising up, standing up, fishing across this racist country and around the world. Perhaps it is the generational divide at work, but you continue, your constituents won't be able to keep tabs on your lie, fuscation, and your continuous abdication of leadership. The comments from Corret are perfect, really, because they are great of what has brought us here. Our system dismisses the people most impacted by, somehow incapable of being experts on their own community. You continue this by calling the demands of BLM, and they're, 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 new, or somehow unreasonable. The reality is that it is you who have zero credibility. You each make over two hundred thousand dollars a year, or the city council person in, 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 here's a little context, New York has fifty city council people, Chicago has fifty-one, one, 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 there are fifteen of you, making you the most powerful city, full city members in the country. And yet, you continue to claim you cannot abolish the deadly, deadly, deadly militarized police force in America, and cancel ren for the same people who are targeted by LAPD, and hand it over to ICE for deportation whenever possible. Exception of Mike Bonin, even acknowledged the pain of people of Los Angeles credibly. It's LA, LAPD is responsible for the original viral racist police brutality, before the internet, they managed to go fucking viral. And since then, they have only become more militarized, well-funded, because of elected officials. You are the past, Black Lives Matter and their allies are the future. Commit to our demands, enact the people's budget, fire Chief Moore, turn in your resignations, and then get the fuck out of the way, because we are building a city that takes care of all of us. I yield my time, fuck you!
Thank you. Next speaker.
State your name and the item you wish, you wish.
Uh, my name is Ally Vengiano, I'm calling to speak, uh, general comment.
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, thanks. Uh, it's hard to tell if you've been here. So I'm calling, like, 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 asking to speak on the police, and adopt the people's budget, and have other, ha, others have mentioned this as well, but many of you have accepted contributions from the LAPD, and I'm calling today to ask you to commit to stop taking contributions to the people. Many of you are, you are, I'm in District Four, who's accepted forty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars from the LAPD. The chair of this committee, uh, has accepted, Paul Kertorian has accepted twenty-four thousand dollars, nine, 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 eight, twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Paul Corret, you've accepted fifty-six, six, 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 sixty-one dollars. Even Mike Bonin, who, whose comments have been, you know, who's spoken up again, who's accepted twenty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars. In fact, it's all, 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 twenty seventeen and twenty twenty, you guys have accepted nearly, 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 nearly four hundred and thou, four hundred thousand dollars from the LAPD. So, will you commit to investing this blood money in bail funds, in mutual aid funds, and in organizations that benefit LA's black community, or will you continue to put the police over the people? If you don't want to contribute to devastating the city, you need to invest in public schools, and housing, and transportation, and stop overfunding the police, uh, that is terrorizing the communities that need the money the most. Also, the police are just generally incompetent. At the two protests weekend, tons of, you know, thousands of people were there, there was no violence, because the police did not show up. Um, the police also, I drove by an Eagle Rock Target last week, and there were four police cars there, not a single person in the fucking parking lot, so just preemptively protecting, attacking, or to where our public's money is. A hundred and fifty million is not enough to adequately address structural, um, everybody knows it. It's also not a budget cut if you're just decreasing a budget increase. Adopt the police budget, Black Lives Matter, you guys are elected officials, power, you have, you have.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on. Caller.
Go right, 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 right ahead. Go right ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go right ahead.
Oh, hello, uh, my name is Elise Munus-Sider, and I'm calling in regards to two items. I believe this first one is gonna be, um, I'm not, I'd just like to say, please eliminate Exhibit H, and fund the Department of Cultural Affairs. Putting funding to art and culture will have rippling effects, starting with the employees of the DPA. Furthermore, investing in art is not expensive, and the research is there to show how many positive outcomes it leads to for children, for students, and for communities. It also provides healing therapeutic services for people of all ages. Um, the wealthy always have and always will have access to arts and culture. This connects the general comment I would like to make on item one, divert part of the police budget to arts and other health and community services in communities impacted by poverty and trauma caused by the racist LAPD. Uh, this movement is not going away, and it, 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 it's been happening in Hong Kong and in Chile. Policing at the rate us people of privilege have been conditioned to accept has never been necessary and has always been unethical. Camera phones are not going away, and communication facilitated by the internet is not going away. The policymakers of Los Angeles cannot stick their heads in the sand on this. Defund the police, invest in systematically disadvantaged communities, and be part of the positive change that will happen in the world, whether you're on board or not. I really want to see Los Angeles do well on this. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hi, yes, my name is, uh, Brady Collins, I'm with Kewa, the Koreatown Immigrant Workers Alliance, I'd like to speak on item one, a general public comment.
Okay.
Yes, I'm calling because I strongly support, I strongly support the Healthy LA and People's Budget Coalition. Kewa was founded nineteen ninety-two in order to help address the underlying economic conditions that led to the Rodney King civil unrest. Nearly three decades, eight, 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 eight to the of LA has still not done its part. I urge you and the rest of the council to reject the mayor's proposed budget. It does not reflect the priorities and values of Los Angeles residents, and the one hundred fifty million reduction in the LAPD's budget is merely a Band-Aid on an open chest wound. In this time of global pandemic and the fights, and, the city budget should invest in communities, not, 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 improving access to, and economic opportunity is the best policy for preventing crime, and recover, recover, recover from that. I urge you to support the People's Budget LA by demanding the defunding of the police, and the Healthy LA Coalition's proposal for funding of much needed housing programs is an important one, and I urge you to support that as well. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. Uh, next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Hello, my name is Dion Turner, speaking on item number one, a general public comment.
Very good, go right ahead, right ahead.
I'm calling as a public policy advocate for the Interstate Law Center. We provide free legal services to the poorest and most vulnerable residents of LA. We urge this committee and the rest of the council to reject the mayor's proposed budget, and instead intentionally defund LAPD while supporting the Healthy LA and People's Budget. In this time of global pandemic and the fight, and, the city's budget, value the needs of the people you serve. We request funding of the following housing me, of the following housing measures, among, 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 those, uh, my Healthy LA and People's Budget colleagues. One, fully fund HSA to ensure existing tenant protections are fully covered, and there is an, as there is an unprecedented wave of eviction relief. Two, secure five hundred units in creating a social housing program for publicly owned property. Three, as an active member of the Right to Counsel Coalition, we seek an investment of seventy million in a fully funded right to counsel and eviction defense program that includes legal defense, tenant outreach, education, and targeted rental assistance. Moving on to a general public comment, um, I want to raise that UCLA-Luftian published a report titled, "The Impending Evictions in Homelessness in LA," and the report highlighted the following facts. The fact that the city has abandoned its prior commitment of allocating nine million to right to counsel, the fact that without a comprehensive eviction prevention and defense program, hundreds of thousands of LA households will be facing undefended evictions when a state emergency is over, and it is our low-income communities of color that will face the heaviest concentration of eviction. Finally, what's to come will be another round in the systemic unhousing of people, especially as the COVID-nineteen pandemic has exposed and deepened the inequality in LA, with the burden of this crisis carried disproportionately by our black of this crisis carried disproportionately by our black and brown communities of color. These are, and the drain pool of resources needed to reverse decades of racist land use policies and divestment from LA's black and brown communities that continue to have devastating effects today. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Alright.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Caller, please state the item you wish to speak on.
For example, I'd like to speak on, uh, General Item Number One.
Very good, go right ahead.
So I live in District 13, and I want to frame this idea and the context, uh, a little differently for, for you all and your careers. Um, so I know that many of the callers are aggressively demanding you to act, so I would consider this. You act, you will have the support of all the people. We are ready to lift you up, we are ready to support you, we are ready to fight with you. Those of us in the streets are calling out for people to power to join, join. You will, another opportunity to have this kind of support in your tenure of public service. This is a do or die moment, and it will define your lives and your careers forever. Imagine the political capital that you could gain if you would unite behind this action. Imagine the headlines, the donation, the reelection campaign slogans. You can each get applause named after you, or maybe even a new sports stadium. If you succumb to the political pressure of the mayor and the LAPD and ignore the calls for defund, defund, you are saying to us, "I accept the recurring killing of innocent Angelinos at the hands of police. This is okay with me. I sanction this with my vote. I defeat, and I have turned my back in exchange for political expediency." Search your souls, talk to your gods, and may you find the courage to join us in this fight for abolition. If you cannot do that, then perhaps you should all resign. Black Lives Matter activists are putting the tireless, thankless work to dream of this budget and a better future for all Angelinos than nothing than the adoption of this budget. If you cannot act in this moment when hundreds of thousands of Angelinos and millions of people around the world have their eyes on you, then you lack the imagination to be leaders. This is the largest civil rights demonstration in the history of the entire nation. If you cannot enact this change, then how do you expect it to get done? Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name, your name, and you wish to speak on.
Hi, Mike, Mike, and I would like to make a public comment regarding Item Number One.
Go right ahead.
Okay. Um, hi, I am asking the committee to please reject the proposed budget. Um, I am an urban planning graduate student at UCLA, and I acknowledge my field has played in suppressing the voices of the less privileged. In an effort to combat the pressures, I am trying to use my voice to speak for those people who are unable to be at the table for this conversation. This is my first time speaking at a meeting, so please forgive me if I'm all over the place, but we need to talk about this budget. As aware, the recent uprisings in the city and the mayor's budget proposal have, um, raised concerns in the public. This budget is just a ration of the status quo, thwarting the police to militarize themselves and teach it, and teachers in the same community barely make a livable wage and use most of their money to fund school supplies. We need to focus on community development and equity initiatives. Social workers responding to crisis calls is one example of the countless ways we can make a difference, but there's so much more that needs to be done, and the proposed reallocation amount is not enough. Additionally, the lack of diversity on this community, on this committee is astounding. With the except, 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 except person, there are no other people of color, nor a single woman in this community, and that is absolutely not representative of the people in LA. Something the committee seriously needs to reflect upon. Thank you for listening, and I hope my words resonated with you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go right ahead.
My name is Cleo Berengue, I want to speak on Item One. Councilmembers, it is no less than your biggest moral obligation right now to defund and give back to your city. We need more homes, better pub, public transport, better community care, list goes on, you know about it. You are alive, you have a power for good. If you don't, the next person to get murdered by LAPD will be on your shoulders. Number one priority ahead, ahead, ahead of your children, ahead, ahead of your personal dreams and reputations should be preventing the deaths of more black and brown people in the city. If you don't defund police and refund the community now, it will happen eventually anyway. Sell LAPD assets, sell all the damn helicopters, these hotel rooms and empty houses, cuss homeless, get creative. At this point, you are simply wasting all of our time and prolonging suffering. If God exists, God is watching you now. I yield my time.
Thanks very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Good afternoon, my name is Margaret Love, I'm a resident of District Two, and I'd like, and I'd like, General Comment, please?
Go right ahead.
Thank you so much for your time today. I actually had a written statement prepared, and I have decided to abandon it, um, and instead use this time that I have been given to implore you to listen to the voices that came, came, came. We have been on this call now for three plus hours, the majority of that time has been spent with people asking you for one solid thing. There's been three calls asking for a stay and neuter, but how many calls have we already listened to that have asked to fund the police? They are not asking for reform, they are not siding with the mayor's proposal, they are loudly demanding you defund the police. I am asking you to defund the police. We need to divest in LAPD, LAPD, uh, we need to invest in affordable housing, in harm reduction, and in trauma response, among a myriad of other social services that would better support our com, our community, especially our black and indigenous communities, our people of color, our trans communities, our queer community, everyone that constantly left out of conversations because they do not have the voice. Please, I implore you, you say you don't want to listen to the hashtags, but those are the voices of your constituents as well. The emails are the voices of your constituents, these telephone calls are the voices of your constituents. Please defund the police. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Good afternoon, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go right ahead.
My name is Salma Perez, I am an Indigenous Apoteca. Today I represent the Mia Community Schools and the Multicultural and Multi-Generational Coalition for Change in support of the Black Lives Matter and the People's Budget. LA's UCLA are in agreement with the council's decision to reduce the LAPD's budget, but most importantly, defund police militarization in the city and state, and prioritize the transformation of a police culture that respect, that respect rights and civil society. Invest in the needs of a, of a community through education and opportunities for cultural and economic growth for young people. We ask that no more of the, more of them for 40% of the city's budget be allocated to LAPD. We also demand that more strategies be developed and implemented to properly protect black, brown, and indigenous people from the police forces, our tax dollars, cities, and town subsidized, especially as the city of Los Angeles presents additional funds on policing and set of community buildings, housing, and education. We ask that the funds be reallocated to other city departments and programs according to the outline of the People's Budget, namely that funds be, 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 as so, universal aid and crisis management, built environment, reimagining community safety, community and cultural affairs, especially for indigenous, black, and migrant communities, restorative justice programs for those negatively affected by injunctions, and CHA gangs databases, gang reduction, and, and. We ask for funds also to be distributed for universal access to quality health and education, both private and public. LCLA offers the support and guidance to the Los Angeles City Council on understanding the perspective of the Los Angeles Latinx, Indigenous, and Black communities, on budget allocation and the community solutions this budget can bring forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name's David Brown, um, uh, from District 13, hope to speak on Item Number One.
Go right ahead.
Sure, um, I suppose I, I, uh, would be saying a lot of the same things as other people, um, to echo the calls to defund the police department and adopt the people's budget, but I guess I'd rather focus on something that other people have said about, um, what I imagine is a lot of political calculus being done, um, among the city council members right now, where, um, um, there have been a lot of, uh, uh, declarations, um, denouncing the violence that we've seen against, uh, black and brown people around this country historically, but I think a missing component, um, and a lot of that discussion has done that. The police is the fist at the end of an arm, um, the heart and the head of which rests with people like you who are elected officials, um, after the heads of police unions and, um, other people who are attempting to obfuscate the Hawaiian. Um, and I believe that that veil is being lifted, and you now face a choice of whether you're going to continue your political future with the people, um, who now understand how that structure is set up, um, or you can attempt to remain on the ship that has so far kept you afloat, but is, I believe, rapidly sinking. Um, that's about all I have to say. Uh, stay and neuter pets as well, why not? Um, thanks so much, I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Hello, my name is Natalie, and I'm speaking on Item One in General Public Comments.
Go right ahead.
I'm a recent high school grad, high school graduate born and raised in Los Angeles. As a member of the youth, I would like to say that this 150 million is a stunt, and it's only about 5% of the LAPD's funding. Our communities are worth more, and it is insulting to think us as the people would not notice this cop-out. The finances within the LAPD such as pensions and overtime pay need to be reevaluated and budgeted. The amount LAPD is currently funded is superfluous. Growing up here as a person of color, there is too much police in black and brown communities that has caused fear to me and my friends rather than actual community support and safety. I, members of the youth, urge from the city council to take more out from police funding and put back into free use programs and art programs, use opportunities to keep young people out of gangs, drugs, and other violence, because we need opportunities for success. Which would also be addressed that the disabled living here often can, can only have part-time jobs due to their disabilities and find themselves struggling with the lack of government support and the increases of unaffordable housing. I also deeply encourage for money from police funding be taken to address our homelessness. I've worked in shelters and volunteered on Skid Row, and there is not nearly enough affordable housing, full-paying jobs, mental health services, and drug rehabilitation. Many people living on the streets of LA have come from similar backgrounds to you and I. If similar institutions and volunteers mainly help in, where I have witnessed with my own eyes, police throwing out all belongings from homeless or giving them five minutes to pack their whole lives and move somewhere else. For your foresight, this has been a temporary solution. And often homeless families are forgotten and neglected. They are citizens of Los Angeles, in addition, there are only so much housing available for families, but there's never been a specific family housing facility, it can be very dangerous for children. The city should be the ones helping because you created this problem, not, not your volunteers and small organizations should be helping. Listen to your citizens, listen to the people actually living here. If you continue to fund the police, whether the, the, the county by LAPD, and eight years will be on your hands, defund the police, I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Hello, my name's Andrea Jean, I am from Council District Four, I'm calling with help, and I'm calling in to defund Item One in General Comments. Like many of the residents of Los Angeles who called, emailed, tweeted, and marched in opposition and demanding the council and the mayor revise this at all, racist, classic, sexist, homophobic, transphobic, and ableist budget, with the most vital page being defunding the LAPD and reallocating those funds to support our communities in a way that benefits the citizens and voters. The LAPD is one of the most abusive and corrupt law enforcement departments in the country which results in both unacceptable human rights consequences and fiscal consequences, which disproportionately affects black, brown, queer, female, trans, and disabled bodies. I demand that our city and this council draft a people's budget which refunds LAPD, implements community care and support, executed by educated, credentialed professionals. I implore the council to consider their legacy and how their decisions will affect their family members, carrying their name for generations. If you do not work to defund the police, you will bring permanent dishonor to your name, and we will work tirelessly to unseat you. Thank you very much, I yield my time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on. Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Go ahead, caller. Okay, next caller, please.
Caller, please state your name and the, uh, the, 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 you wish to speak on.
Welcome, Encino, I'm Lush, please! Uh, okay, here we go! Welcome back! The budget king has returned! Only four hours and seven minutes on hold! Thank you for taking me so quickly! As you see, you've heard a lot of people use colorful metaphors to describe how they feel about our budget. In the words of Jose Wezarr, "Fuck you and fuck the city council!" Mr. Wezarr has not been charged in consecutive of a crime, but because he has brown skin and the LAPD beats the shit out of anybody that's top white, he can't attend council meetings like Councilman B, AKA Congressman!
That's wrong, sir.
Absolutely! Now, I wish you would have voted on the motion for us before you said public comment. That way, Mr. Kretorian could be arrested in front of his gay son, A-Drake, and his pet and wife, Tamar, on the 11 o'clock news, but you caught it just in time! And I also know you left there with Mr. Fable! Mr. Fable is the criminal attorney for Lori Martinez that sat on the court that gets off eating 24/7! And of course, the Black Lady Monica Rodriguez, because she used to be a prostitute back in the day before she got a bust, I heard seen on the city council! So, I demand justice! Fuck the police! Fuck you! Fuck America, city!
Your time is expired, thank you very much. Time is expired, next caller, please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Lady, it's OJ, uh, speaking on the Agenda Item One, General Public Comments.
Go right ahead.
I'm asking the city council to reject the mayor's budget and to pass a budget that prioritizes the actual needs of Los Angeles residents by adopting the Healthy LA and People's Budget Coalition. Our communities were already facing the nation's worst housing and homelessness crisis before the pandemic. Black residents are overrepresented in the homeless population and are at higher risk of dying from COVID as a direct result of systematic discrimination, generational poverty, and a lack of community resources. Councilmember Boomenfield mentioned infrastructure, and no one is asking for less money for infrastructure, or asking for that money to be taken away from the LAPD. Let's put that money towards infrastructure in black and brown communities that continue to be neglected in terms of public transportation, green space, and accessibility for disabled citizens. It's not enough to make nominal budget cuts for the LAPD, we need to defund and abolish the police and divert that funding towards housing and social services to our most vulnerable citizens, and reparations to black and indigenous communities. The police do not keep us safe, they do not prevent crime, and did you not achieve justice? In fact, domestic violence is two to four times more common amongst police families than American families in general, and police officers are known to commit sexual assault impunity, specifically targeting minors, sex workers, unhoused women, and women of color. You need to defund the LAPD and use that money to address the root causes of what you deem as criminal behavior. Every dollar you decide to give to the LAPD instead of underserved communities sends a clear message to your POC constituents, particularly your black and indigenous constituents, that the city views that the city views them as potential liabilities that will inevitably need to be caged and controlled rather than human beings and communities who've made the city what it is today and deserve to flourish. Don't tell us what you can't do, don't tell us you can't afford it. It's your job to make it work, to find and research alternatives, and conserve the citizens who pay you to do your job. Black Lives Matter and their allies and other grassroots organizers have laid all of this out for you, and you should be thanking them for doing the work that you're paid to do, but haven't thought of all there to do. You work for us, the police work for us, and we're saying loud and clear that's their fire. Please reject the mayor's budget, abolish the police, and pass the People's Budget.
Thank you very much, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Go right ahead.
Uh, hello, my name's Sally.
All right, go right ahead.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to speak on item number twelve and one. Um, I was raised in region Los Angeles, I am an arts professional, and I, just like everyone else that's spoken in the army, definitely want to uplift a lot of these forces. I am a woman of color, and I too want to just share my support of the People's Budget. Um, these are our taxpayers, our allies, and, um, we're looking to this, um, especially asking for common feeling of trust before. So, when you think, uh, what you're gonna do, um, and clearly, the people have spoken. Secondly, in terms of item number twelve, we definitely want to fund the city. We found it out, uh, as a factory, uh, what used to exist as these arts and education sector has been no longer there now. Uh, we definitely want to make sure that we're looking to our future and our future generations to come. When we're thinking about, when we're thinking about even our current situation in the last three months, what is it, one of the first things aside from reaching out to these communities is really looking to arts and culture. And without a doubt, we want to make sure that we stay and that we do not eliminate the people. As we look through all these budget items, and I know there's a lot of people who are being thrown around, but just know that there's people behind this too. And I know you all on the board are trying your best, but I know, going on for over three hours, we too are listening, and, uh, we're looking, and we're taking action. And we want to stand in kind with the people, um, that represent right now. And again, just want to say, thank you, uh, but also, uh, that, you know, these actions that will be taken by leadership, um, by the youth. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next speaker, please. We have about ten minutes to go before we will return to the agenda. Ten minutes, uh, to go, please, next speaker.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Yeah, this is Rob, and I'd like to speak on items one and two. Go right ahead. Thank you, um, you know, I'd like to take a step back to last year, uh, when our committee chair spoke about the reserve fund and acknowledged that we had some labor contract negotiations pending, and that while we had a mighty reserve fund, it would not be something that would stay in the recession like we had in 2008. Um, I think it's important to, you know, not forget the original spin. Uh, why is COVID hitting us hard? We can't make up for lost revenue because we have a massive LAPD raid that snuck through in the fall, that is sandbagging everything we want to do. Uh, this budget deficit is driven by COVID, it's driven by cowardice and corruption. Um, we're looking at two hundred and eighty-eight million dollars below our previous budget, and, uh, we're looking at shortfalls for our next budget of forty-five to four hundred million. Um, and our mayor's seeking in a proposal to cut an additional hundred million from other city departments. Uh, you know that those other cuts are going to be devastating and don't offer significant savings. We need all of that two hundred and fifty million to come from LAPD, and that's just the start. Um, with all due respect, our budget chair last week said that, uh, we can't budget by hashtag. What your committee and your council have been budgeting with silence on LAPD, and that is really just criminal. Uh, despite waves of public comment asking you to stop this issue, only now are we actually hearing our council members open the address, the sacred cow of LAPD. Uh, you sat tight through so many warnings of waste, fraud, and abuse. Um, despite all that, uh, we've really seen nothing from this council as far as changing that tide. Um, failure to adequately cut LAPD means more cuts to other essential services. Um, we need to end the drop retirement program, and with councilmember Correct, um, what we're seeing is naked politics. Uh, with you, that's particularly unseemly. Um, we've got an issue here with you running for office and seeking the support of Police Protective League Union, and nobody should forget that.
Um, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
My name is Cristiana Crop Dozier, and I'm here calling because I want to support the People's Budget. You've heard it so many times on this call. Um, what we're saying is that we're tired, we've had enough. If you're tired of hearing people say fuck you, then I suggest you listen to them. I want to affirm that one hundred and fifty million is not enough. We see people suffering in our community, and police are not the answer to these issues. They are not social workers, they are not educators, they cannot house the homeless, they cannot de-escalate in traumatic situations. They are not trained to be therapists, but we have therapists in our community. They are not educators, but we have educators in our community that aren't getting the funding that they need. I could go on and emphasize what's already been said over and over, but the reality is, you just need to defund the police. There's no questions, there's no commas, there's nothing going on, but you know you need to defund the police and do what is right, and bring about people that are trained to bring about change in our community. So, let's do what's best and not give into systemic pressure to uphold a system that's founded in racism and intimidation. I yield my time.
Thanks very much. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go right ahead.
Okay, yeah, um, I mean, I'll keep it quick, but like, you, the, the city council owned by LAPD. We know that, um, we know that, that you take their contributions from their union, and police are an instrument of white supremacy. It is, that is not a rational concept. This whole council is completely corrupt, and we know you're lying when you say you can't defund the police. We know you can defund the police. Listen to the people, listen to what we're saying, shut the fuck up!
Caller? Caller, are you there? We can't hear you. All right, I'm very sorry, that all seems to have been dropped. Uh, caller, are you there? Okay, I will need to go to the next caller, I apologize. Don't know what happened there. Go right, go right ahead, next, next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on. Caller, please state your name and, and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Go right ahead.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hello, my name is Emily Bargelma. I am a member of Black Lives Matter LA. I'd like to speak on item number one and leave a general comment. I'm calling to insist that, uh, we defund the police. Divesting one hundred and fifty million dollars from three point one billion budget that's allocated to the LAPD makes absolutely no sense. The city council should reject Garsteve's shameless budget plan and adopt the People's Budget. The people have spoken, this is our money. We've been casually defunding schools for decades, helping the system make way for the school-to-prison pipeline. We're increasing spending to create a police state while our homeless population continues to grow, increasing police state while public health services, trade vocational job training, libraries, community center services are significantly cut. You're choosing to continue to fund a slave-catching system, one that criminalizes my people. This is not right and it's unacceptable. Coronavirus has wiped us out financially, so the logical response to that by the mayor is to fund the police? The same individuals that are on video brutalizing protesters? These are folks that are currently unemployed, folks that were given a measly twelve hundred dollars to cope while the government bails out white, uh, collar criminals. You would rather continue to fund a failed system than listen to the people and reimagine a budget that is moral and just, one that funds communities of color? Are you afraid to fund these communities because doing so will deplete your prisons of your modern-day slaves? My people? Stop being bullied by the fraternity of the police. Do the right thing, defund the police. And to our allies and accomplices on the road to the abolition with us, thank you. Because when we win, everybody wins. We are winning, we will win. Black Lives Matter.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. We'll be taking two more speakers, then we'll be moving on. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
And turn off your device, please.
Hello, my name is Joe Randazzo, I'd like to speak on number one, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank everyone who spoke before. This has been one of the most incredible, um, experiences of my life, listening to my fellow citizens speak so eloquently, so knowledgeably, so passionately, so fairly, except for a few people who use the F-word, with you, to empower you right now to do something that no other city council has ever had the courage to do, that we're witnessing in, in one place across the country. And while, while I need, I, I'm trying to stop myself from talking, but I am a white person, um, and the things I can speak to as a white person are cops and technocratic eggheads, which seem to be kind of what we're discussing here, and I don't mean this as an insult. I do want to ask you, city council members, have you ever met a cop? Have you had any experiences with police officers? Uh, I don't mean to generalize, but I'm going to do exactly that because police officers, if you come out of an experience with a police officer not feeling offended by their humanity, then you're either one of them or you're somebody who worships authority. And I know plenty of technocratic eggheads who worship authority, who probably do not have good relationships with their fathers, and bury their heads in numbers. So, when I hear someone talk about the cost of burnt-out police cars after describing at length the physical process of killing George Floyd and ranking him perhaps back into Rodney King, and then I hear that that person is the person who is in charge of allocating money, our money, our people's money, and can't seem to find the moral fiber within him to do it, I, it's so clear that you're living in another world. Thank you very much, I encourage you to defund the police and support the People's Budget. They've done all the work. The most leadership you can do now is to step aside and let the people who are actually living in the city decide how it needs to be handled in the future. That's the best thing that you can do. Thank you so much, uh, free the police.
Thank you very much. Uh, and let's go ahead and call the next speaker, which would be our final caller for this evening.
Caller, please state your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is Malika Dollywall, and I would like to discuss agenda item number one and provide general public comments.
Go right ahead.
Hi, um, I have lived in LA for most of my life. My mom is a doctor, and I support runs the COVID-nineteen crisis. And it's supposed to be so much when you almost call to vote without hearing the people's comments first. You know, um, the LAPD has been a corrupt system for almost the entire existence of Los Angeles, from, um, from its inception to the Rodney King riots, to the Rampart scandal, to Michael Moore's comments recently. They have not earned our respect or our budget, and they operate without, you know, with impunity and without accountability until they can, um, until you can show us that there's an LAPD that's willing to work well with people. The best solution is to defund the LAPD and provide those resources to students, to students, to mental health workers, to all these people who are sorely underfunded. Students are in school with cops and no counselors, and I call on you to fund the LAPD and do the right thing.
All right, thank you very much. And thank you for, thank you to everyone who participated today to speak. Um, we will now return to, uh, first, let's go back to the FSR and go ahead and, um, call that for a vote, and then we will move on to our next agenda items.
Councilmember Krikorian?
Hi.
Councilmember Corret?
Aye.
Councilmember Correct?
Aye.
Councilmember Boomin?
Boomin, aye.
And councilmember Horn?
Boomin, aye.
Thank you, you have a card, please, gentlemen.
Very good, thank you very much. Uh, next agenda item, please.
That is the mayor's proposal for the twenty 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 twenty-one budget for the three-year term, which will include the national university program. And we then treat all of the other three things. I'm concerned that the president has been a little bit hesitant. I think he's been a little bit hesitant. I don't know what he thinks.